Started tonight with the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for coming to our August board meeting. We don't have any students to recognize in a long time tonight, but I think we have some next month coming. But we do have a community forum, but I did not see anybody sign up. Does anybody have anything that they would like to speak tonight? If not, we will jump right into the agenda, talking about our multiple renovation projects.
Starting off with, kind of as we've had habit of doing, the high school ones kind of combined, really no change. Sentry has not asked us for any money. We are certainly not offering them any. We really haven't heard much from them. They have commented that they are, there's a couple of details inside the gym lobby, the wood pieces and that, that we again asked them to replace because they replaced them before they fixed the water, so they have to replace them again. We expect those shortly. So hopefully by September, we can, or yeah, September, we can say that all that work is done. That's what we're looking toward.
So we think in September we'll be all done, and they'll probably send the bill at that point?
Maybe, maybe not. They, for a number of reasons, they are very preoccupied elsewhere, as we'll mention later. Actually, I will mention now, you may have noticed Joe Hayes is not here. Joe and his brother spent majority of the last two days at their Valley Shannon project trying to get occupancy before kids were coming for the night before school night tonight at 5:00. They managed that at about 1:00 this afternoon. And that's a project being worked on by one of our favorite contractors. So he kind of sort of felt like he needed to go home instead of come here. Felt like we could answer all the questions. All right. So there's really no actual action on either one of those unless anybody has any questions.
My only question is when we go to, when they go to submit their final bill, I know we've talked about this, is can we, is there any recourse we can take with some of the legal work we've done, or some of the extra hours we pay custodial staff and that kind of thing to deduct from that?
Don said we can ask them, and if they refuse, he wouldn't recommend that we...
That we fight it?
Right. But we're gonna ask. You know, we're gonna, you know, we've kind of put together, you know, some information. I'm asking, trying to quantify a little bit, but it's probably, it's not gonna be a significant number, because, you know, when you look at the amount of time, it wasn't hours all the time at once. There were several times where it was a significant amount of time, but we're probably gonna look in like maybe the $8,000 to $10,000 range. But we're gonna ask, and if they go, yeah, that makes sense, and if they say no, then, you know, we can look at it again, but Don's recommendation is you're probably not gonna get that. And you would just be spending a lot of money on him to go after it. Any other questions on anything having to do with the Highlands renovation projects?
Do we know what is our remaining...
We're over $110,000 on this amazing project, I believe.
Do we owe all of that? Is there any extra that we would draw back?
We, we really, until we sit down and start to do the BG4s and 5s, which are more the final documents, to go to KDE, we won't know for sure. There may be a little bit, but that project with the number of continuing change order and change order and change order, as they kept wanting to add more and more in terms of trying to complete the loops that went around, there, we were pretty much close to this is what we have, because a lot of that ended up being paid by the general fund toward the end. So that was in that final rush to kind of complete out and then move around and kind of get everything complete, we pretty much got that real tight to the dollar. So I don't think there'll be a whole lot in there. Any other questions on the high school?
All right, next, Moyer.
Moyer, I know many of you were able to attend the ceremony yesterday and the open house tours. A lot of positive comments from everyone that I spoke to, very, very few criticisms at all. I joked with Karen that the only person that really gave me any criticism, criticism at all was John Williamson.
[laughing]
Who told me what, he would have done different.
Ah, right.
But I expected that, knowing he was gonna be there. So...
No doubt.
It was a great event. I felt well attended and a lot of positive feedback.
Cookies and water.
And as, as always with those events, the number of community members who have absolutely no kids and even grandkids in the schools still, who've come to these events and see what we've all been doing together as a group, and the positive feedback that they, they give us, it just tells us we're on the right track with what, with what we're trying to do. So I had a lot of great conversations with people that were, you know, a generation older than I, and that's one of the reasons I love those events.
We had a lot of oohs and ahs and wows, I mean, from people of all generations. They were really excited about the collaborative spaces, the natural life, the openness, the sentry or so.
It was so awesome.
The media center.
It was so cool.
I mean, they just, on and on and on. Thought it would be, it's a great place to learn and really, you know, is sort of a jewel in the community, so.
And I just want to say, I did love the fact that one of our student speakers mentioned that he was a fourth-generation Moyer student. And, you know, there is something about that that didn't surprise me.
So, you know, great event yesterday. We do have a number of action items related to trying to tidy up the project. We have change proposal 124, and that's one that needs your individual attention because it's in the amount of $32,109. It was for undercutting unsuitable soils along the main driveway. You know, we paid Geotechnology to do special testing, they came in and said, what's there is not suitable, and here's what you're gonna have to do that. It's something that was covered by unit pricing in the contract, so there was no negotiating over what the cost had to be. It was strictly a matter of cubic feet of X material that needed to be used by the direction of our special testing engineers from Geotechnology. And, you know, basically without that, they would not have been able to finish the drive as it comes past the school and out toward the road. And then we had a little bit more of that back at the parking lot, it was just a number of about half that, that's part of the upcoming change order. So those two issues were the most significant things here. So we're asking for approval of change proposal 124, an amount of $32,109.
So, second?
Any questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
And everything that is on change order number 11, very few of these are either our request or the contractor's request. Most of these are all at the behest of the state building inspector. Items such as we had to revise two hose bivs and restrooms, we had to provide six additional fire alarm devices. One thing that was kind of at our request was increased storage capacity to the camera system, because it wasn't recording and holding information as long as we'd like, as we wanted. And it was as much about Moyer as it was adding the rest of the buildings onto that system. So we requested additional storage capacity in a change proposal for that, that ended up costing us $11,232, which really if we had tried to start over with, you know, trying to new capacity at the high school, middle school, the number would have been higher. So we just kind of added.
The stuff for the, like, the building inspector changes, is that pretty standard? Have we run into that before?
It is, and there have been some of them on the previous change orders. In the middle, I won't say in the middle of the project, late in the project, Bill Amato, who has been the building inspector for this area for quite a long time, retired. And there were a number of things that he would allow you to, I won't say work around, but he had a little more common sense approach, and his replacement was a little more strict by the book. So he might, he might say, well, yeah, you're within a foot of where this needs to be. You're, it's not affecting, you know, the safety of students, where you'll be okay. Whereas, you know, like the project, we had a few more of these because this is how it's supposed to be.
When you mean cameras, do you mean security cameras?
Yes, yep. Yep. So the total value of that change order was $84,292, and the two undercutting, the things that were kind of our, that was, you know, rough math, $47,000 of that.
Just wanted to make sure it says 97.
Yes, it's 97.
It's 97, Jerry, I just want to make sure we're making it for the right amount.
84 to 97?
Yeah. Okay, so moved.
You need a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions?
Is that itemized list relative to that $85,000 change order, biggest fire alarms or whatever? Is that on the...
Yeah, it is, it is. Typically would have gone through that some last Thursday, but because we had other issues to attend to.
Seems like a rather significant amount of money for the things mentioned.
Well, as I indicated, a good 50% of it is the two undercutting issues, and then you throw in $11,000 for the camera at our request. I don't see anything else on there that is above $7,000.
So Jerry, I know that the new contract sum, including this, is $20,031,035. Do we think it's gonna be much more than that total?
The next pay app would authorize payment. Joe and I talked through and recommended that this pay app be for everything with the exception of $50,000 on Morel's retainer, which is a fairly normal number at this stage, considering the level of completeness they have. Now, next month, when I come and ask for a pay app for in excess of that, that'll be because he, Matt Morel is not allowed to bill for the 84,000, 85,000 that was just approved until that goes down to Frankfurt and comes back. So he may come back with, you know, an $85,000 or, you know, $100,000 pay application next month, still leaving a little bit of retainer unless we feel like everything is 100% done. Matt's normally pretty fair with his requests. He actually typically requests a smaller percentage of that retainer until things are pretty much complete.
How much of a punch list do we still have?
A few items, some of which are more warranty items. It'll be dealt with as such, but there are a couple of small outstanding issues we're trying to resolve. So we have a countertop to replace that was damaged and a couple other, you know. We had some cracked tiles that we found after Rosa Mosaic did the majority of their punch list. We don't know if it happened, when it happened. It wasn't on the original punch list, we didn't notice it, and it was pretty plain, so there's some, but not, not a significant amount.
You have any questions on this?
These tamper resistant receptibles, which I hate those things, by the way. How many of these did we add at $6,655? We, actually it was more than that, because there was another line item of $3,631.
What, what kind of occurred in that situation is the building inspector in this, the current phase, because you're required to do them for children under, where you expect, I think it's children under...
Eight, maybe?
Says eight, I'm hearing.
Also said, in order to get your final occupancy, you gotta go back to your first phase and fix those. So we had to go back to rooms, not just for, I guess we did first, second, and third grade to be on the safe side, but then we also did some of the special education rooms, because kids under that age might be in there as well, some of the specials classrooms are and along those lines. We tried to make sure that we were in perfect compliance, because we really didn't want her holding up final occupancy, which we were anticipating getting in July, but we really didn't want that held up, and, you know, so we got it done, and, you know, we did get the final occupancy versus the temporary we started with in April.
So you don't know the total number then?
I'd have to calculate it, because there's a different number in every classroom. So, but there, I mean, you know, we, in this project, we put more power in classrooms than we've done in previous projects, and because of one-to-one, we're gonna go even higher than that amount at Johnson. Of course, all of these will be included in the base bid for Johnson, whereas some of these regulations changed post-bid.
Although I'll point out a couple of places we're saving money. So Johnson, we're not doing all the wiring in the wall, you know, we're doing the, the mobile displays, so we don't have it just static permanently, so we talked to CLH engineers, I mean, that should save us some money. And I do want to say a place that we saved money just on Moyer was, originally we were having three-dimensional letters on the stage, and I don't know how much that was, but I know Jerry said it was too much, so they weren't gonna do it. How much was it gonna be?
In that situation, we probably saved $15,000, $20,000.
So $15,000, $20,000, so you know what we did instead? Colin Shadwell and Andrew Martin made those letters and very put them up there for us. It cost us $16 a letter.
Maybe we should try to tap those resources. That'd look better.
So he, yeah, they look great, I mean, they...
But they did.
They looked great, and he made them on a CNC mill.
It was interesting, it was the night after the new family, and Andrew drove by and he had one of the letters already, already done that night, so.
So we appreciate that, because it looks so much better, and, but that saved us right there.
And that shows the dedication of our staff that are not even in that building, so that's...
Jump in and stop a problem.
Testament to the staff who wants to solve problems.
They like getting creative.
I think they do that, yes.
But you're right, I don't like to see change orders, so I certainly don't like to see. It seems a little high.
The truth is, these are significant amounts of money for these items. You know, our hands are tied all the time in these situations, and they know that. I guess I would respond to this two ways. One, it would seem like these items should have been in the original plans and specs. I realize you're saying since things changed and we got a new guy in there and everything, but I would think tamper resistant outlets for eight, you know, under eight's probably something that's been around a while, I would guess.
It wasn't required at Woodville, I don't believe. So, you know, there's, in terms of the wire, because they've been available.
Those things, I don't even think they've perfected that yet, to be quite honest, but it's virtually impossible to plug in and out of new things, but anyway, I guess it is what it is. Relative to the tearing up of our sewer cleanouts, would that not be the responsibility of the contracted company that was moving the trailers?
We have had some discussions on that, trying to figure out if we can find a responsible party to recoup that money from. We were advised that they were damaged, but we don't know exactly 100% who did it. So, you know, we, we wanted to get them back up and moving, get it done, so we can get the parking lot in, and that's one of those things where, let's get it done, and then if we think we can get some of that money back later, we will try. So Joe and I are trying to figure out who we might be able to pin that on, but, you know, we didn't have cameras working in that area at the time. We had some coverage, but it wasn't all the way out into the parking lot.
So you're not positive it is from removing the trailers then?
That's best guess, so, you know, but it could have been during the trailer remover or as the next wave of people went into work in that area, which could be electricians, which could be, you know, could have been land again and was looking to, you know, oh, we made a mistake, we don't want to have to... There were, our concern was let's get it done. We need to get this project done. We have a deadline, August 12th.
11.
Yes.
Any other questions? We already have a motion and a second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
That brings us to pay application for Morel Construction, an amount of $459,410. As I indicated on the actual paperwork, it shows remaining balance of $50,000. However, this 84-plus will get added to that once KDE approves that, which could take anywhere from one month to two. So we would really like it to be on the short end, because until we get to that point, we can't start looking at BG4s and BG5s. So we'd love to get this project tied up and those documents done prior to approving a contractor on the Johnson project.
Prior to the High School Freedom?
Possibly. Very, very possibly.
That's good.
Love to do them all at once.
All right, so any questions? Not needed approval for the payout, against the full number, so.
$459,410.
$459,410.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? Speaking of Johnson.
Yes, Joe and I were talking today. They are really pushing hard on the design work at Johnson. We've had a number of meetings involving different staff with, as Karen mentioned, with CLH engineers and others, so that they can try and get the final designs done for your approval. They would like to have them done at the end of the month, and, you know, we may be able to kind of push them down to KDE, get them on their way, but we'd really love to have them here for you at the next month's meeting for final approval. As part of that process, we do have a couple of waiver requests. The first one being a family resource space. This is one of the KDE requirements. We have done this for both Moyer and Woodville, where they require you to have a family resource space in every elementary school. However, our district does not, has not, and likely will not ever qualify for a family resource program. So we'd like to be able to use that square footage for something other, for another purpose that we need in terms of collaborative space and such. So just like the other two projects, we're asking for approval of a request, to request a waiver from KDE for the requirement to construct a family resource space.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
The next one, I don't recall having to do this on the first two projects, however, it makes sense, because it is a requirement for KDE that you have a recreational field space essentially the size of a soccer field at every elementary school. Now, we did not ask for that at Woodville, we did not ask for that at Moyer. We would have if they had called us on that, but they did not. In this case, they did. So we're asking for approval to request a waiver of the requirement for recreational field space as required in, you know, KAR, because we have very limited space on the existing site. We simply cannot meet that requirement. We do have access to a recreational field space at other locations within the district. In this case, not as close as right across the street as the other two elementaries, but still not that far away.
Okay, I need a motion for a waiver for recreational field space.
So we've, we've never had to do this before, is this, you say that you've never had to do it before, is it something new, or is this just...
No, it's, it's something that's been there, which for some reason, KDE in their review of the schematic design said, where is that? Joe said, I have room for it. I said, well, you're gonna have to get a waiver. Okay.
I mean, the whole site's not as big as the record.
No. The last, the last thing, if that's been approved...
We still, we still, so we have, we have our, any other questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
The last thing on Johnson, we have done this on the last few projects, is the board has to approve the crime prevention checklist. It's crime prevention through environmental design, and this is a document that Joe, as well as the engineers fill out, and then we review and give our input on, where they have to go through and basically declare yes or no to a series of questions, so that we know what we are providing in terms of crime prevention through environmental design and what we may not be able to provide. You know, as you see, is a scroll through some, you know, what risks and opportunities are posed on school property in areas directly adjoining school property, traffic related. Joe's comment, no. Our, our student drop-off area separated from school buses and other forms of transportation, yes. Owner has limited bus service, we are going to provide a small area where the bus can pull off. That's something that they were, we tried to say, we weren't, we didn't need to do it, and they said, no, you have to do at least something. Okay, so we're saying yes, and it's gonna be a small area. And most, in most schools, they want you to have a separate parking lot for staff, for students and visitors with different signage. We don't have room for that, so, you know, we typically mark, no space constraints, and, you know, copies of that are online with all the information. If you want to review it, it's very similar to the one we did for Moyer for parts of the high school. I think the first project we had to do this on was Woodville. Prior to that, we didn't even have to do it. So, some of it's during project related in terms of student and staff safety, and some is post-project safety. You know, is the office located adjacent to the main entry? Yes. Does anything block the view? No. In the design, he doesn't have anything. Do windows allow, now allow natural surveillance of approaching visitors? Yes.
Do we have to approve this?
It is a requirement to be approved, and then Joe has signed it, Stephen Federley signed it on behalf of, behalf of CLH, and then it has to be either superintendent or board designated, in other words, either, either Karen or myself has to sign it on behalf of the district.
Does it say specifically that it's supposed to be completed by your architect?
Yes. So they complete it based upon their, the design parameters, and then the engineers have to review it, because there are some questions that would be relative to them, and then it comes to us, and we look through it, and we made about five comments and said, you may want to change this, you may want to change that, because, you know, we want it to be an accurate document.
All right, so I need a motion for approval of the crime prevention through environmental design document. Right?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
I believe I'm done.
You're done.
For now.
What's that, for now?
For now, I'm back under discussion items.
Oh, yes, that's right. You covering for Mr. Winkler tonight?
I am, I am.
You can see him out there.
He is a commitment, so I told him that I would fill in. This is a second reading of the policy in regards to our school property. If you recall, it was bans, and we had a policy in place that did not match our procedures, and that would be the physical requirement for van drivers who do not transport students. So our school employees that fall under the supervision of Jerry, and it extends that out and opens that up to our current practice. So again, this is the second read, and do you have any questions? This is for the physicals, right? Correct?
Yes.
All right, any questions? If not, we need a motion for approval of the revisions to those policies for use of school property.
So moved.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you, Jamie. All right, next one is a few items that we actually discussed at our working board meeting, but the first one is to establish a position for administrative assistant to the athletic department.
Yes, we talked about this extensively the other day, and one of the things we wanted to do is to, because of the hours worked and the responsibilities, we wanted to change the job description and also change the amount of hours and days for the person who works, the classified person who works with... the classified person who works with the athletic director at Highlands High School. And so we are taking this to the same number of days and the pay scale as the secretary to the principal. We are extending it to 40, eight hours a day, and also 240 days at the paid scale of the secretary to the principal. We know one of the things is this person has more of a flexible schedule because they work in the evening, and we did find out that we are not allowed to have a person work in their same sort of job category on a stipend kind of an issue. So this person would be using their hours to work, so, which would mean that there would be overtime if they work over 40 hours, which was one reason why we went ahead and extended it to 40 hours a week. So we had a, I know extensive conversation about this the other day to make sure that we could get this position to the level that it really needs to be in order to sort of arm head by your department.
Okay, any questions? We did talk about this extensively.
I know Mr. Neaporty's here. We kind of brought that to the attention.
Okay.
There hasn't been any new information though since our working meeting?
No, the only new information is that I did verify with our attorney that anyone in a current position can, his hourly position, cannot work the same type of position or the same category position for a stipend. It has to be added to their hours. It would be the same thing for a bus driver. If we had a bus driver and then we asked for the bus driver to do, you know, to do athletics or something, take, use the bus to drive, and we said, "We'll just pay you a stipend for that," that's illegal according to wage and hour law. We would have to actually put that on their time sheet. So because this person is in the athletic department, any job this person would do, the position would do in the athletic department, has to all be considered part of their hours. You did verify this.
Is this gonna work out, Kevin?
It is, and we had a lengthy meeting with all parties involved, and I think everybody's on the same page.
I will add as well that instead of people who are not current administrators supervising games, the administrators will be dividing up the games, and so we will have an administrator at games. We talked a lot about that, about how that was important for supervision. In the former position that was called supervisor, we will now call that game manager. That's not something that has to come to you all because that's through the athletic.
Which is kind of discussed and changed the wording that we use so that everybody's on the same page. We still do have a couple supervisor positions in our football worker list, but that's only due to, it already had been sent out, and we're already, we already have planned for all football games and secured workers for all of those events. So, we are gonna save the significant amount of money on all that, too.
Okay, is there enough of you three to fill all of this?
We're about to find out.
Okay. That's my concern. I mean, I don't, I don't want you to burn out a month into the job, and so between you and Matt and Jeff, I just want to make sure, and I 100% agree with this approach, that you have an administrator.
And we have a, we have a team meeting Tuesday.
Okay.
Where there'll be myself, Mr. Barcaso, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Getz is also.
Okay.
I jumped into the mix, and I also spoke with Mr. Lenz, kind of like in a pinch, and then I'll do the same for him, which is what I did for my predecessor. So hopefully, we're about to find out.
Okay. That's something I'd like, I mean, you know, we kind of talked about also this role and tracking hours of supervising games and that kind of thing over the course of this year. I want you guys to track that too so we know what's being asked of the administrators also to see if that's a problem.
Yeah, and I think just as it all, as the wheel turns, get back with us after you've been able to evaluate and follow up and see how it's going. That's to Karen's point, we want, we want it to be effective and efficient, and we don't want you to burn out on us. Because you'll burn out, because it's what you did, you burn out. Seems like you're already scheduling games. Who's gonna, who's gonna be the game manager way out many minutes? Which is great, this is awesome, I'm just saying.
I think we've taken care of football and soccer.
Yep.
But we're a work.
No, I think it's fantastic. I just, do I burn out?
We also talked about looking at some titles across the district and some of the secretary positions and making sure that, so we're gonna still do that?
Yes, so we talked about the term secretary, and maybe that's not the most up-to-date term, and so we're just looking at that. The other thing that we talked about, and I have to say there's already been a headway made on this, is we started to look at, you know, specific coaching and extracurricular positions, and we wanted to add, add some funding to those or make some changes. And what we decided to do is we're gonna take the next month and really review those thoroughly, and I will have to say that Mr. Neaporty and Mr. Getz have already started to do that with sports, and we already have a document that has all the comparisons already just from last week. And we'll be doing the same thing with some of our, like, band and that sort of thing over the next 30 days so we can come back with a more comprehensive look at that.
Good. Okay.
It's in your inbox.
I saw it, it looks nice.
Alright, any questions on this one? If not, I need a motion for approval to establish a position for administrative assistant to the athletic director. So moved. Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And next one is establish extra service position for AV specialist.
And so this was brought to our attention by Mr. Poff. One of the things that he would like to be able to do is have some adult help during the football games so that we can enhance the broadcasting system during those games, but also to extend that to other evening events. One of the things we talked about, and I've talked about with him, I think Mr. Barcaso has as well, Mr. Neaporty, is to give our students more experience with broadcasting, especially, you know, we're gonna do football games, let's do some JV football games, get some experience, kind of do a farm team process, have some apprenticeships so that the first time that they're broadcasting is not at the big game. So we've talked a lot about that over the last several days. And so having an additional person to help, extra duty position, a person who has expertise in this area could do that, that could make sure that there are many more evenings. I'm just looking at you right now. So if our students get more opportunities, it's really hard just with one person. Another thing we talked about was as we start to maybe have additional sort of clients for our broadcasting team and our video production, film production team, it would be nice if Mr. Poff is teaching classes, that there might be someone else who they had a flexible schedule and adult could work with them in other locations. So anyway, we are asking for this extra duty position, I believe it's $2,911. It's the same as, what is that Peggy, the arts?
Yeah, the arts facility is just.
Assistant, assistant with Jason Burgess, so we kind of do a similar.
Yeah, I guess it's a great idea. So expand, especially if we expand 20, 20 grand in activities over there, we talked about real-world activities, this is a good idea.
That way he could still stay at the high school and have classes, but if students come in groups, do business partners, he's supposed to.
I'd also like to add that we've already got our current student announcer in contact with the person, Bengals, and also Mr. Engelhard, who helps, is also reaching out to others to get more experience.
And part of that experience is going to be also about educating them on these specific uh.
Should love, yes. Yes. That's why we specifically talked.
We've been working on that too. Mr. Poff has already reached out and given our student announcer certain tasks a few days ago, leading up to the game. We're working on it.
Yeah, trying to see if, yeah. So, you know, having announcers cut their teeth on some of the events such as JV freshman games, he's really supportive of that, so he's gonna.
Okay, any other questions? Yep. Alright, so I need a motion for approval to establish an extra service position for AV specialist.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, next is a word of contract for public relations and marketing services.
So we are recommending that the board approve the bid and the contract from Living Media for our public relations and marketing services. We've been very pleased with the, both the amount and quality of public relation services that we've received. We heard from Living Media the other day, we will tell you they were the only bid that came in, and they're about 3,000 more than last year, but one of the things is they did much more than they said they would. That's number one. Number two, this is for, this could be extended for up to two additional years at the same cost, and so they have to take that into consideration. And the other thing is that, I'll just say, with the market the way it is, I, we could not get someone to actually do the content for, I feel like, for anywhere near this amount. So that's one of the great things about our current service is it's not just giving us strategy and saying, "Here, I will help you with your social media calendar," but it actually is doing contracts, so, content. So for example, I think we had contracted for, I think, no more than eight videos. He's done 28. We've done many more things, podcasts, he's written several articles, he's got, he's got news media. And one of the things we keep saying is when we win these rankings such as niche.com, they're looking at much more than test scores. Test scores have quite a lot to do with that, the academics. But they also look at the entire feel of the school district, and they're learning about that through social media, through the news that we produce, through websites. So getting the word out there about what our teachers are doing, what our schools are doing. So for example, being Cincy Magazine's number one again, we were number two, and one of the things they point out were about our Mr. Baseball and about our Cappies and what we're doing in the arts. Will they find out about that? They're not calling us and asking us what we're doing, they're able to see that. So we want to continue to do that, but this is the contract that we're recommending.
Any questions? No comments? Alright, so I need a motion to, for approval to accept the bid received in our contract to Living Media for VR marketing. So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do you guys want me to stop talking?
I was trying to help you out.
We were helping.
I appreciate it. Alright, so we're gonna move on to discussion items. So this is a follow-up from, was this last month?
Yes.
So the, some folks with the band had come and asked for some assistance with a, with a ramp or structure to move equipment, and so I know there's been some work going on, so we've got an update tonight, and so feel free to comment. I know there's some folks in the back that are with the band here tonight, so hopefully we're starting to address some of your concerns from last month. Alright, Karen?
So Joe has, he talked right after the meeting last month with some of the band parents, and they threw some suggestions out, and he went and took a look at what was possible, had some ideas. He did meet while I was gone with one of the code officials to get permission to do this. It is possible to do it if we want to proceed with it. The idea would be to blow out this wall, basically, change this from a window to a door, keys with the rest of the band room, come out to a five-foot flat landing, then have 30-foot of one-to-eight slope. He has to do another five-foot flat landing, do 30-foot, and then kind of tail off with another flat land. One-to-eight slope, it is one-third steeper than ADA requires, so we would not be allowed to use this as an entrance or exit for pedestrians. Students could maneuver the equipment, but they couldn't just walk on their own with their instruments. They would have to exit out this way or come out this way. We would have to redo this entire area all the way up through here because we would have to remove all the concrete because he's gonna be required to do flat areas, steps, flat area steps for emergency egress, which he has to keep closer to or at requirement for that. So it is possible to put one-to-eights, you know, typically for ADA, you're at one-to-12. In other words, for every inch you go up, you have one foot to make that. Okay, now we're gonna cut that down to eight inches. So over 30 feet, you're gonna be dropping close to four feet, so it's not an insignificant slope as you're moving this equipment down there. Okay, I don't want people to go, "Alright, this is possible," and then come, come back and say, "That's way too steep for our kids to be moving equipment down." Okay, we still had issues. So it's, it's better than going down the steps, certainly, absolutely, but it is not, you know, it is not something that, you know, is perfect.
I know that we saw this just the other day for, first time, so I don't know how much you've been able to see it, but any concerns initially with that?
I think what happened is the width of the door, we just gotta make sure our instruments were being able to go through that door, a single door.
The one that we're gonna make?
The one on top going through the window there. That's, I guess the issue there would be.
You don't have to be minimum of 30 inches.
Exactly the width of that window and the door would be.
What about that slope with, is the?
That would be.
The weight, you know?
It's one foot. It's not that steep. I mean, it's steep, it's not.
No, no concern there.
It's not like going down the Fieldhouse driveway, for sure.
Okay, what about, so, so door size, is that reflected? Do we know the sizes on that?
You can't, you can't see that on there. My guess is he has a 36-inch door there.
That's the issue because the header on there, remember I asked, I guess I asked you or Joe or somebody the other day? So the issue would be if we're gonna make that wider, you're talking about a lot more construction, structural integrity and everything else, because we can basically use the same header that already exists there.
So why is it? The widest one we have, I think about 32 inches in width, so it needs to be an inch, at least an inch wider than you said.
So a 36-inch door, which is, looks like 36 to me, should be fine.
Do we know the width of the ramp itself?
Well, they're, they're five-feet-deep landings. He doesn't show in here the width of the landing, but it looks to be a little bit wider than that door, so he's probably, has that about a four-foot ramp.
Okay.
In my guess.
I was just concerned if we do get it out the door, like, turning it to get it down the ramp.
Some of those instruments are up to 80 long, so it would just, it would be nice to have that reassured, so if we're not gonna build this ramp and not be able to get instruments up there.
Questions?
That's a good point.
We can ask him to expand that initial landing to eight-foot to get things started. The question is how, you know, does that give you room at the end of the ramp where he was trying to maintain some space for that same reason, trying to make that turn?
That, so when you come out that door, do you need like more room where the steps are showing there, or is it okay if the, see at the, at the top down, I guess at the bottom of that drawing on the left, it says new door. Do you need that space out where the steps are showing, or is it okay to be right at that right angle right there? I think it would most likely be okay at that right angle, just so, like I said, some of those instruments are long and wide, so it would be a matter of being able to make that turn, which might. Like a trailer type.
I'm thinking like a little bit more room actually behind the ramp, because there's gonna be a railing there of some kind, I'm sure, right?
Yeah.
There will be a railing, yes.
So I mean, if you gave him another foot or two towards the front of the school, that would allow the railing to be backfiring.
Maneuverability there and possibly a little more depth on the, on the initial landing.
But you don't have much space because that's a, that's an emergency exit, right?
He might be able to come here, out here a little bit, in here a little bit.
I'm like talking about a quarter.
I see what you're talking about. I was looking at the drawing, I see what you're saying.
Just so the railing is not right there when they want.
Here's what he said. He said he can, I asked how wide is the door for the band ramp? He says he can make it whatever you want. He'll measure the window opening tomorrow, see what it currently is. He believes it's around three foot six.
Okay.
And I said, "How wide is the ramp?" He said, "Four foot, but it could be, can be wider." He said, "Once he gets the survey back, we can review and tweak it." I said, "Can they make a turn with an eight-foot-long instrument?" He said, "Yes, I can make that."
Fantastic.
That's not really, the pitch was the biggest issue.
The other thing we can do is out of wood, plywood, whatever, have Barry or somebody build this as like a model before you do, you know, any. build this as like a model before you do anything like that. Build a, build a model of a five-foot ramp.
It ends up being the forms for the concrete report later.
It could be, but I mean, you could build something that looks like...
I think he'll be able to show, and Joe's pretty good, we, we had, you know, I mentioned the Fieldhouse and, and that, the slope of that driveway, we had requirements for what had to be done in terms of fire apparatus that the city currently owns, that we had to, he had to be able to show the fire department that they could make that slope and that they could make that turn, and he did that by getting the dimensions of the vehicle and showing them, you know, on paper that they were able to do it. So he can use CAD and make sure that that is possible without having to go to the expense of, you know, trying to make sure, because until we blow the hole in the wall, we won't know. We don't want to do that until we got the rest of it done.
Now, my question too is, so all of the instruments that you're moving are going to be on that top, top level then? Because otherwise, kids are still carrying them up that level to get down the ramp.
Even with the steps in the band room, they at least have space that the wheels can, can be brought down one side at a time. It's those stairs off the back are too steep to safely carry.
It's a bigger step.
But they will be all on the top level, okay?
Yeah, that makes sense.
And then it's okay for the rest of the kids with their instruments to go out the existing steps out the back door? Because I was just looking at that, there's really no, like to come out that door, they'd have to go out in the hallway and back around, so they're still just going to use the same exit that they use now.
And just so everybody knows, in terms of cost estimate, Joe's not changing his estimate, because previously, we weren't touching anything really here back, and now we are. So there's a significant amount of concrete that has to be brought out and redone, and some fill, and stuff like that. Because now, everything really from here down, he's going to have to do, and we, we believe we can get some mechanical equipment up there to make it easier, but he's concerned about how much labor might be involved in such a project. So he's staying with his $50,000 estimate until we get some pricing. Which if, if everybody's good, we'll, we'll start trying to get some designs to people and see what they can do.
Well, kind of what I said at the, at the working meeting, if we can find a way to chew this thing off in smaller pieces, where we can use either our own staff, a combination of our staff and maybe city staff, or a combination of our staff and third-party vendors that we would hire for less than 20,000, whatever we can do to try to keep this project from turning into a, a large, expensive bureaucratic project that requires...
During, during that meeting, I did email Ron Dale, he did later respond, that he'd be willing to meet onsite and discuss it, maybe with him and Kevin, and see what they might be able to do, we just haven't had a chance to set that up yet.
I mean, they certainly have the staff that can do this. I mean, they sat there for 10 minutes with the red light in front of me.
So basically, it would be separate projects, one project to demolish all the stuff.
So you're saying you want brick to be the landings?
No. I can't stand the brick in the middle of the road. But I think, I think there's ways to, I don't want to say we want to circumvent the system, but there's ways to do a project like this where we don't have to go through the whole process.
Well, we've done that before. I mean, we did it on the soccer field, I mean, the city put in a lot of work there, we've done that before, so I don't think we're going around...
Quicker, and less bureaucracy.
Correct. I mean, if we had to put it out to BG1 and all that kind of stuff, it's not going to happen for a while.
That moves a stamp's pace.
So we will, we could declare it an emergency, see if we had to eliminate some of that. They, they probably balk at it, but after...
Well, we have already had a student, we have had an instrument infected and...
If this doesn't work out, Joe, and I think we can do that and be almost done before they, you know, start balking at us, so.
You said this ramp can't be used for pedestrian purposes. I know one of the issues with the lift and the accessibility of the band room currently, if we had a handicapped student, would they be able to use that ramp?
The code official was requesting we put signage saying that's not possible.
Okay.
So, because it is clearly a, a significantly higher slope than what ADA calls for.
Okay.
So, I don't, I've never seen a no handicap sign before, I don't know that they even exist, but...
But from a practical perspective, it may be a better solution than what you're using now.
Absolutely.
Relative to handicap accessibility.
But we don't...
I'm just giving you the answer the code official said. I'm not standing there watching.
I mean, and if you look, you don't have, they can't get the one-to-12 coming off of that ramp, which is what, what would make it okay for a handicap student to be able to use it, so not in this plan at least.
I'm just saying there may be signage there about that. That's all, that's all my answer would be.
This is leading to the riser, the top of the riser, right? It's not really leading into the building.
Correct.
So, so next steps, you take a look, get some pricing, figure out what we can do to...
I'm going to try and, we kind of want to wait until after tonight, and then I'm hoping that I can meet with Ron tomorrow, Wednesday, and see where they are on it, and then if we get to the point where, you know, we don't see an avenue for that to work well, we may say, hey, can we do a quick little meeting and do an emergency BG1? And then that allows us to shortchange three months' worth of approvals.
There's no value in somehow getting a door to get kids out down the stand, the stairs here as well, right? I mean, there's no way to do a door to get out that exit, do you understand what I'm saying, Carrie?
He, we looked at that, Joe looked at that, because that was Matt's idea, I believe, and they didn't think that was a suitable solution.
It's kind of a similar thing, if we put stairs in there, you're pushing the stairs either too far out so they're in front of the door, or too far into the band room, so you lose backwater.
So it's, it's definitely an improvement, but again, you know, it's not ideal, but I, I do think it would be a definite improvement, so. That's where we're at.
Your last thoughts back there?
I like the plan, right? The answers I've raised issue.
All right, I think the general...
I appreciate you guys' quick work on it, I very appreciate it.
Thanks for, thanks for the patience, so, so I think general consensus is we'd like to move forward, so we're not, it's not an action item tonight to vote on it, so we're going to see what we can do.
Because at this point, we don't really need action. We're going to see what we can do without having to make that.
I think we should, we try to move on this question.
See something again next one. Did you get anywhere with your instrument that was damaged and from an insurance standpoint?
Yeah, I talked to AB harms and central, the information and different plates.
I believe it's been ordered.
Great. Okay, thank you.
And looking forward to seeing those uniforms Friday night.
Correct.
It's a big reveal.
All right, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Next item, next discussion item on the agenda, superintendent report.
We're just going to do a quick update on Portrait of a Graduate. Some of this, those of you who have been at the breakfast and leadership retreat, have seen this, but we have a couple of, we have a couple of new things. So I just want to, and for our camera and for our community, as many of you know, we use, last year, we had many different meetings trying to determine what we wanted from our students to know, do, and be like when they leave us, so that they're prepared for the future workplace. We've had this mission, actually was created in the 2012, 2013 school year, so that's about six years ago, and it's definitely on point, it talks about things we know are important, such as creativity, curiosity, innovation. We just didn't really have a specific plan for ensuring that this was happening in all of our classrooms, or how we were measuring it, and so we knew, I know when I came on in the summer and talking to many administrators and teachers, we weren't really sure where we were headed as a district, like, we know we do a really great job academically, but where are we going, where are we all going as a district, how are we aligned, what's our North Star? And so that's why we had several different events and ways to gather input from, we had these committees, and I can't say enough about these great committees who've been working on this work. We heard from our industry leaders, we heard from our teachers, from our students, so on and so forth, to gather data, and from that, we have determined the five competencies of our Portrait of a Graduate. So we're still rich in tradition and focused on the future, that's our tagline, that's our motto, that's where we're going. Very proud of the tradition, and very proud and focused on how we can continue to give our students the skills for the future. But after all of this work over the last year, our, our teams and all our work together has focused on these five competencies, so creative problem solvers, we want our students also to be curious, critical thinkers, global communicators, empathetic collaborators, and courageous leaders. You can see a little bit about each of those areas, and those are some work of our committees. I will say at our Professional Development Academy, and I'll talk a little bit about that, and I'll put Bill on the spot if he wants to say anything, I'm just giving you a fair warning, Bill. But on Friday, the first session was our keynote, sort of general session, where each of these groups of teachers and administrators coming to the stage to talk about the team and their Portrait of a Graduate competency, and it was really inspiring and exciting to hear our teachers talk about why they had decided to name it what it was, and what they thought was important about that particular skill. So we won't go over each of these, but one of the things that we're, our teachers are doing is really getting to know what these mean, and we're going to talk about next steps, you'll, you'll see where we're going with this. But we definitely want our students to be global communicators, and that's not just being able to communicate digitally, orally, in written terms, but also to actually use that communication to bridge gaps and mobilize ideas across geographic, political, social divides. You'll see this idea of inclusion and, you know, sharing, relating, and enhancing culture in several of these, that was a common theme that came up in some of our community conversations, is what can we do to be more welcoming, to be more inclusive, especially when that's the world that our students are in now and will be. Same thing, this is courageous leader. There are really three different areas in this one, making sure that we attend to our students' social and emotional well-being, finding ways to really help them find their strengths and interests, and especially career plans, and then also their leadership characteristics. Our next one is empathetic collaborator, not only find, knowing, understanding how to collaborate even from a young age, but also this idea of empathy. Again, how do we develop awareness and real compassion for others? Creative problem solver, this team has a lot of great ideas with regards to project-based learning, and design thinking, and making, innovating, entrepreneurship, finding ways to ensure that we solve these complex problems that our kids are going to face, that they have the skills to do that. And curious and critical thinker, so not just enhancing the critical thinking that our students do, we just, one of the sessions attended today at the Professional Development Academy are three of our high school teachers, and just the thought that they put into how they design lessons every day to really get at those high-level skills is just, is just very admirable. And one of the things that we want to do is not just continue to do that, but it's, it makes sure our students are constantly engaging in inquiry and, and wonder, and initiating their own learning. And so those are the five competencies, and our plans are to really describe, be able to describe, create an instructional framework that describes student success levels for each of these. So what does it mean to be at the top of your game, for example, in global communicator? And then where might students start? So we're going to create these instructional frameworks where we describe those student success levels, and these different teams of teachers and administrators will be working on that, and any community members. Big thing we're going to do this year is to really recognize and highlight competencies now, when teachers are doing these already, when students are experiencing these. How do we not only showcase those at board meetings, on our social media channels, all kinds of public venues and, and internal venues, but also how do we keep, and I'll show you in just a second, how do we keep these ideas, keep them somewhere so that other teachers can learn from them? And then we really want to help teachers grow and support their ideas. So I love the way that Bill said on Friday to the teachers, they love this, that he talked about, that we're going to play this year, you know, we're really going to just try things out in a risk-free environment, we're going to make sure we have the learning conditions for people to try out ideas they might not have tried before. And so we want to support their ideas, we want to give them all the professional learning that they're asking for, that they would like, all the visits they would like to, to make, but also to help grow their ideas by our new, we're going to have a crowdsourcing innovative platform where we get their ideas, we will, the teachers themselves will vote on those and choose ones that they want to sort of prototype and for our district to try out. So you can kind of see our timeline, we did this at our Leadership Academy that Jamie, Bill and I went to, and then we've also worked this through all of our leaders at our Leadership Retreat. So we're in this, this term right now, I think with the kickoff with the PD Academy, and that was, we, from now until about October, we're going to try and continually showcase students and teachers who are trying Portrait of a Graduate competencies, we're reframing many of the things we do, you'll see this in just a second on the PD Academy list. We're starting the team, Matt is on this team, Michael Houghton's on this team, along with Diana and Bill and Pete Wakler, to roll out the crowdsourcing initiative to get our teachers' ideas. We are going to continue to, like we said, recognize the teachers' innovative efforts. We're also doing leadership training on the four Cs leadership practices, which just means, you know, how do we practice leadership on, around those 21st century skills? How do we become agents of change? How do we model the four Cs? How do we network? We hope to launch the crowdsourcing initiative in October, November, and to kind of finalize our rubrics for each of these competencies. Hopefully, we'll have idea workshops in November and December, so Matt Potasso did some training with us at the Leadership Retreat on what that might look like, that ideation, and then you'll see many of those new ideas will be, will be going strong in January and May, and we'll learn from those and see what do we need to scale up, and what, did we try, it didn't really work so great? And then next summer, we'll decide how we're going to measure these. One of the things we, we want to make sure that we, we're not just talking about this, this is a great idea and it's set on a shelf, that we are really making sure that our students are exposed to these competencies, that we're measuring whether or not they've met those. And again, this isn't yes, but, like, that's great, we've been doing really well academically, but now we're doing something different? Absolutely not. This is yes, and. So yes, we are going to continue to excel academically, and our students are going to have these skills so that they can be globally competitive. Okay, so that's enough of me talking right now, because I just wanted to show this, and so just as an example of how we're getting this kicked off, so Bill created, organized an entire Professional Development Academy on Friday and today, and every session, these are all done by our teachers and administrators, with a few outside, you know, fairly hand-picked organizations, and all, every session is coded, one of the competencies, to really hit on that. And so, Bill, do you mind talking a little bit about kind of some of the things that you, we saw and you organized for us?
Yeah, I mean, it went really well. We had our two-day sessions starting on Friday, it concluded today. Overall, teachers had the opportunity to self-select eight different professional learning sessions that they wanted to attend and to learn from. I'm making this figure up, but somewhere around 95% of the total offering were from our own internal personnel, so our own teachers. Sort of as a follow-up to the presentation that I had at this meeting in June, where we talked about all of the professional learning that our teachers and administrators were going to this summer, we talked about what would that cycle look like as a follow-up, and so this really is one piece of what that follow-up looks like, because the vast majority, well, a significant amount of these folks who presented in our two-day academy are people who did leave the district over the course of the past summer to attend those professional learning experiences that sponsored them to do. And so as Carrie mentioned, we did label them with affiliations to the Portrait of a Graduate, and we certainly tried to find ways to have an, an appropriate distribution of sessions that would be remembered for the audience that we have, so considering... So, considering the high school staff size versus middle school staff size, versus having three elementary teacher staffs, not all on campus. And so, we had, I think, a great experience for people. There are some things I think we could do in the future to do a little more efficient and effective, so I'm looking forward to hopefully the opportunity to implement that. And then, we're gonna definitely get some stakeholder feedback to determine, you know, what sort of ideas would be to expand upon this, extend this a little bit greater. But one of the most significant outcomes probably is the colloquial collaboration that took place, both in person, I mean, having people talk who can't typically develop a relationship or work with one another or share ideas, simply because of the fact that they don't work together in a like situation, but also it's, I think we certainly upped the Twitter stock slightly over the course of the, you know, the last couple of days, which I think is fun and engaging, but also another way to connect.
And I, and I said this to Bill, and I said this to Joe. I, this was Thursday morning, 7:30, went to First Watch afterwards, put Twitter on, because I was eating breakfast by myself, and I was so excited to see all of the tweets about the PD Academy. I mean, I was like nerding out on it. It was just so many different people tweeting about it, so many positive things, so many pictures, so it was just, it was just the enthusiasm that I could feel on Twitter that was going on in that building, it came through. I mean, it just came through and made me want to be there. Unfortunately, I couldn't make it, but it was, it was clear that it was a very exciting day.
Our teachers really took risks too, because you have to be very vulnerable to present in front of your peers. If you're in an administrative position, you sort of have somewhat of a background in doing that and preparing for that work. But teachers don't necessarily, I mean, their class are typically significantly younger than ours, so you have to be very brave to take on roles such as this. And especially if you're also a student, for example, like Matt, he went to a session on the 8th, so, you know, he's not the only one who went to about our wall that was that comprehensive, so it was really neat to see people come together.
That's what we wanted from our kids too, so we certainly did.
Well, I'm looking, Bill, at how extensive your menu was there. You know, it's like, it's like going to a buffet, you know? What do you, how do you choose what? And the ones that were over-the-top successful as far as attendance, some of the people that couldn't fit that into their, their schedule, are these gonna be available again or replicated in some other fashion? That teachers are gonna be talking in lunchroom, they're gonna say, well, I went to this and it was unbelievable. How does, how do, how do we pick up the rest of them?
A couple of the teams, especially our very savvy folks in the middle and high school, because they work collectively in departments, they worked together to determine how to spread the wealth and attempt possessions. I'm not saying that happened within.
No, but that's, that's a wonderful way to look at it.
And they had their own sort of best tool online to collect that material and share that. We are gonna release a Google Team Drive, which is an opportunity for each of our presenters to upload artifacts from their presentations. So, whether it was literally like a PowerPoint wall, perhaps, you know, supporting supplemental materials, that they can at least make those available electronically, so they can access those and research and.
Can we, can we film it all?
We didn't necessarily, we did not, no. We took pictures. So, that's a great idea, and I certainly, I can appreciate that. We do have an opportunity, I will say this, we have an opportunity built in to our P Plan this year, where we have four one and one-half hour sessions of professional learning built in as a requirement over the course of the next eight months. So, we can still take advantage of that positive time to do follow-ups, but also to allow for subsequent opportunities for further professional learning that's gonna be taking place right now, to be able to come back and deliver that content.
So, you said, everybody that presented went off-site for training?
Not everybody, no, because a lot of people presented up an area of passion, or an area by which they have an extensive, deep content knowledge or knowledge of it.
So, that was kind of where my question was going. How are we, because obviously you're doing that, how are we digging that out of our excellent people? Because, you know, when you're terribly passionate about something, that's when you have such a freedom of speech, and you're just so much more impactful, and have an ability to reach people when you have those passions. So, how are we digging that out, so to speak?
I think our principals and assistant principals did a really nice job of doing some encouraging in our school sites once we released, we did a proposal essentially, so anyone who thought he loved, I'd like to present this, also a proposal and see if that can approve. A lot of our principals, all of our principals and assistant principals actually navigated through conversations in their school buildings, encouraging their folks to come forward and do that. We also had really almost 100% exemplary with those proposals, so we sort of thought that, you know, I'll submit this, my name's on the pod, I'm sort of okay, that's all I did.
That's good, get them out of the comfort zone. That's the same thing we're doing?
Yeah, and I made the comment, I mean, like, weeks ago, I was, we were not in a position to re, we were being re-advertised for proposals, because we did have such a plentiful amount. So, from the onset, you know, we had all of the offers we really needed to move forward. We didn't have to solicit continuously.
From my perspective, I think it is so terribly important that we let, we absolutely have them convinced that we are dying to know what's on their mind. We want their participation, we want to know what their passions are. We want every possible ounce of great stuff that they have, because I think that's where you get some phenomenal stuff.
And we have heard nothing but positive. I mean, there are people after the breakfast and after the last two days, I mean, people are saying, I think, you know, they're excited at the high school to have, you know, and they've certainly gotten to know you, Matt, because doing those sessions and that, and they're very excited and positive, and people seem to be kind of on fire and very, very excited about the year. You know, we saw that at Moyer yesterday, but just talking with teachers. And so, some of these sessions were full, and some just had a few people, but that was okay, because that was a really strong, meaningful conversation that you could even have with four or five people. So, it was, maybe we can repeat some of them too, maybe during the, yeah.
I think it's a natural progression. I mean, you know, certain people come forward as very natural teacher leaders, and it comes at a very comfortable, red face, and so I think those people stepped forward right now, and I think people will now be inspired by them, and will be motivated to sort of take a chance at it all, get it all, you know? So, I think moving forward, we'll see the more involvement, if we have the opportunity to capitalize on endeavors such as this.
And I like your, I like your comment about teachers were very vulnerable to get up there, and so, but we talked about it at the Leadership Retreat, vulnerability is a strength. So, it's great to see that people did that, they got out of their comfort zone, and it was positive feedback and engaging and excited, and to your point, Brett, even those that are a little bit hesitant to come up, if they did that, they got positive feedback out of it, and they shared their passions, that's what we want.
And oftentimes, they have some tremendous passions and tremendous value to bring to others, so that's what I'm looking for.
So, this is kind of a segue from that, it kind of gets at this idea of how can we capture some of the things our teachers are doing? Whether our, whether these are videos of people presenting, or maybe now what they're doing in their classroom? Like, so for example, I talked about these, we had these three teachers who've spent a lot of time working on their presentation, they're gonna actually be doing the same. It was kind of a run-through before the ACT simple symposium. It would be really great to videotape that actually happening in their classrooms, the data process that they talked about. And so, this is, Heidi actually created this for us. We talked about having a playlist for each of the Portrait of a Graduate competencies, where we, show you, where we make that bigger. I'll show that to you, you can find it here. Where do we go? Make this bigger for me. To have a place where we describe what each of these competencies are. So, this is from that committee where they described it. Here are some of the ideas. And then, our goal would be to put district examples here. So, as we start seeing examples in classrooms, we can post videos, we can post lesson ideas. Here are some different resources and videos to be able to see what it's like, so that as we are asking our teachers to do more with, for example, global communication, that we're able to explain to them and show them what that looks like, both from other resources, but also from other classrooms in our district. And so, that's kind of the goal again this year, is to see where it's happening now in our schools, and really shine a light on what our teachers are doing, and what our administrators are doing, and what our students are doing. And Heidi did a session on this today, so.
Very good.
Any questions? Alright, I just wanna briefly say Jamie did a session this morning, navigate prepares, that might be something maybe next month that you all will wanna know about for safety, and also an update on our SRO and that sort of thing.
Alright, thank you. Next on discussion, and we have board committee updates. Anybody have any updates? Nope? Go updates. So, sorry, we do have one, he, last discussion, they were tucked into the back here, Diana. Data security and privacy.
I had your iPad right next, it's not, it's not on the back.
That's okay. Just wonderful.
I appreciate it.
That's perfectly okay, because this is actually the same PowerPoint. A lot of my colleagues in the state are not repeating this every year, so I'm not going to either, but it is a requirement that by August 31st of every year, I have to, your CIO has to present on data security and privacy, and make you aware of the procedures that we are following to meet House Bill 5 and 232. So, Peggy, if you want to go forward. So, this is, yeah, just one. What I was gonna say is that it is, go back one more, this state law.
That's it.
Forward. Where it was, yeah, notification to the local board that I have to do this every year, so. I don't really just wanna come do this every, but I have to.
Come on, Diana, we're loving so much.
So, you have your federal and your state laws and guidelines that have to do with safety and security when it comes to the web, and these are some of our relevant board policies. And House Bill 232 called for the creation of a certain statute that prohibits certain uses of student data by cloud vendors. So, we are required to make sure that vendors are using our data appropriately. And we also have to define personal identifiable information, PII, which the state has provided for us in the statute. And this requires the district to acknowledge to its local board prior to August 31st of every year, that has to review the guidance of the KAR, and that we are, let you know that we are implementing our best practices. So, Peggy, if you don't mind, I'd just like to go ahead and skip to, I think it's slide 13. We've talked about this two years in a row, this is third year, so it's in there if you wanna see it, but I do wanna show you, well, okay, keep going, it's next one. So, this is the Student Privacy Pledge, which I rely on a lot. This organization, I think it's Common Sense Media, has created the Student Privacy Pledge, might not be Common Sense, I'm not sure, but anyway, there's the Student Privacy Pledge, created a list of all these vendors that have signed on to the Privacy Pledge. And basically, what I tell parents and teachers is if there is a site on this, then it is okay for us to use, because it's already been vetted. Otherwise, teachers are supposed to vet the sites before we use them with students for, to make sure they meet the Student Privacy Pledge and the KAR requirements. This is my yearly annual notice to you that we are doing the best that we can do to follow House Bill 5 and Senate, and House Bill 232.
How old are those bills?
I think this is my third year to do this.
We appreciate your efforts to keep our students.
Thank you.
And the box has mentioned.
Any questions? Questions? No questions?
No questions.
Alright, I need a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Is it a second or do you say?
Yeah, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, any other business this month? School starts, I was gonna say, it's big. Football game Friday night, right? First and Beaker?
Home game.
Home game. Anything else? For next meeting?
Don, did you enjoy the meeting?
I did. I was very excited today.
She had a real.
That was brutal.
Heard you had a big crowd.
It was huge.
I bought 750 popsicles and there were three left.
Why didn't you go home?
I was ready to hear what was happening here.
It was on our way home.
Well, there's nothing else, then we will adjourn. Thank you for coming.